It's seven o'clock and I'll call the July tenth, twenty-eighteenth Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We have Pastor Mike Ingo here from Draper Valley, Pentecost Hall in his church to do our invocation. Would ask everyone to please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, sir. Let me thank the county administrator and the board for you guys continuing this practice. That's a great thing you do. The Psalmist wrote that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, so blessed is the state and blessed is the county whose God is the Lord. So let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, and thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, we thank you for this board. We thank you for the work that they do for this county. And now we just ask your guidance upon them and throughout this meeting, that the decisions they have to make and all the business that is conducted here would be done to the benefit of your servants and the people of this great county. And we'll give you the thanks for everything you're going to do. In the name of thy son, Jesus, we ask it. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone. We'll move on into our agenda. We have citizens time. Linda Myers.
Yes.
Linda, I mean, good afternoon.
Hi. I'm here again to talk to you about our Speedway issue of the air quality. I've been in touch with VDAC, with the DEQ, with a whole bunch of people, and everybody keeps, they just shuffle it back from one agency to the next agency. So I'd like to know what you guys have found out since I was here last. Anything?
Bill, you got an update on?
Really no change. I mean, VDAC, they do the animal part of it, limited size of animals.
Okay, let me interrupt that. I've tried to find out the limit, okay? They, everybody talks about ag stewardship. It's, now they're telling me that they're not, they don't have to do that. They're not, DQ or VDAC is not, they're the principal regulators, but they don't want to know about volume of animals. They have not been out there for that. So, continue.
Right. So that's their animal. The DEQ forces worry about the water quality and any runoff that might come from that contamination from state waters. And the highway department, I understand, talking to Mr. Marshall, VDAC has a slope drain, still there, but to move. So VDAC has an interest in that. It's the water going to their right away. Beyond that, as I told you last month, there's regulations that involve odor. It's a hard thing to do. Regulations and ordinance that I've found in literature search from other places in the country, feel primarily with maintenance where there's a required amount of, you know, every so often.
Right.
You have to put some chemicals on it to treat the odor every so often. So it's a preventative measure versus basically a quantifiable violation of system air safety.
But nobody seems to want to know, or nobody is monitoring that happening up there, according to them.
Right. Because they're, they're set regulation. We don't have an ordinance for anything like that at the state, other than have VDAC to monitor.
No.
They do either.
No. And I talked to them, in addition to surface water, about groundwater, and they don't, have not done any groundwater monitoring. They shifted again to go to the state to DEQ. It's their problem. Then they start talking about, are there lagoons there? And what about liquid waste handling? But then again, they say it's an ag stewardship problem, and it's a VDAC problem, not a DEQ problem. So here we go. Everybody is passing the buck and nothing is happening.
Linda, have you talked to Senator Carrico or Delita Campbell?
No, I haven't.
Since these are state agencies?
No, I haven't done that. I called the EPA. They referred it to DEQ. So we go back and forth. And then I've also called, let's see, I called Mount Rogers Environmental Health, and I spoke to, oh my God, I spoke to a lot of people. And lo and behold, the guy that was there before is no longer there. The new turkey is Travis Holt. He knows nothing about this issue. And he said he would investigate it. And that was as far as he went, as far as that goes. So, you know, Speedway's nine, two-hundred years old. You've collected taxes from us for years and years and years. The combined taxes of that property with the feedlot is a smidge over three thousand dollars a year. So if the properties in Speedway are now worth nothing because of what he is causing, at least he could pay everybody's tax bill. You should look into that. So they have, everybody there has a significant loss of property values. The businesses, startups, everybody is affected. And there's also huge health concerns. I came upon a study. It's called Animal Feeding Operations: Air Quality and Public Health. This is a 2018 release from a doctor, and it all has the information about, there's diagrams in here, about all kinds of stuff from air quality and other possible problems. So we would like to have you guys get to Mount Rogers, talk to them about doing a survey in the area of public health issues and concerns. We're concerned about the environmental damage to local wells. There are people there that do have local wells. Nobody seems to be interested in that. Nobody seems to be concerned about what's going into Triple Creek. So you guys got busy, and you snapped your fingers, and you did a noise ordinance. The people in Speedway would be delighted to have somebody make a noise versus the smell that they have to endure day after day, 24/7. It's absolutely awful. So we are hoping that you're going to do something. Do something, and we'd like to hear from you.
What do you want us to do, Linda?
I don't know. You can pass a nuisance ordinance, something. You can also go to Carrico. You can also go to the state people. You can jump on VDAC or DEQ or whomever on a continuous basis until this turkey does something because he's killing the village of the Hamlet at Speedway and the surrounding area.
We'll continue to monitor and look into it and see what we can do. Ted Schilling?
I'm not Ted Schilling. I'm Cherie Schilling.
Okay.
We are here because we live on Skowada Springs Road, and I understand that that was brought up on your June 29 meeting as far as paving that road. We are one of the people that live on that road that do not want it paved. We've lived on that road for 23 years, raised a household of little boys, and it was a very safe rural setting. We feel like if it was paved, it would increase the traffic. It would increase the speed. During our years there, there have already been three accidents right in front of our property on very sharp bends. And there's another very sharp bend on that road. If you have cars going very fast, it's only going to increase that probability. In addition, when we were speaking with another neighbor, it's nice to live on a dirt road where horses can come down the road and people can ride horses and ride their horse and buggy. It's fantastic. 2018, you still have a very rural setting. Don't want to say anything else?
It's not a parade.
That's all I want to say. We are not the only ones that do not want it paved. And we live, one of the houses closest down to the road, and yes, it does get dusty, and it's okay because we can wash the house, and it's okay.
Is it affecting your rice?
No, the rice is doing great.
I was, I saw that, and I was like, that looks like rice. We were going Sam and Kathy's one night, and Sam and Kathy said, yep, that's rice. And I was like, I never thought I'd see rice growing in Wiscantie.
Probably the only time you've seen, probably the only time the rice has been grown in Wiscantie.
Yeah. Addams always signed up on citizens time, but I'll give an opportunity if anyone would like to speak. Here's your chance. Okay, here and none, we'll close citizens time. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of June the 29th, 2018. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve this for them.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any corrections or changes to be made to the minutes? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And I will back up one payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
Chair will like it.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in seconds. Any invoice any board member would like to pull out or discuss. Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Old Business, Appalachian Regional Exposition Center emissions tax ordinance set public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I put this back on the agenda. You all have previously looked at this ordinance. The next step to be looking at setting a public hearing for this, and this is your all's interest in doing that. The levied amount, the rate on section two of this levy rate would be 10%. If that's what you all want to advertise, that's what's allowed by the code section. I would not recommend advertising for August 14th. We already have two public hearings scheduled for that night. So I don't want to know if you all want to do it.
What are those?
The Grounds Ridge Road subdivision is one, and the water rates is the second.
Water rates may have a lot of people here. Moving it out to September 11th, would that hurt us as far as implementing ordinance, getting it passed before the center opens?
I don't think that it would.
Okay, let's set it at September 11th at 7:05.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you want to set, at least have a motion to set that public hearing for that date?
Yes. Entertain a motion to set that.
I'll make a motion if we set the date for that and that we advertise it, it's the 10% on the emission rate.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion?
Do we have to look at the full 10 cent?
If you advertise at 10%, that's the maximum. So if you pass the ordinance at 5%, that's okay.
Okay.
But if you advertise at 5%, you go to 10, you got to readvertise.
Any other questions? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is so set.
I will mention, just while I mention Grounds Ridge Road, we had a public meeting on Grounds Ridge Road, Max Meadows, United Methodist Church last night, to go all over everything. I would say 50 or 60 people were there, very good crowd, lots of support, some concerns from some others. And I think we will have quite a few people show up in support and some in opposition to that coming up on August 14th. But it was a very good meeting last night.
Okay, Stevens, anything else on our old business?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Okay, moving.
Mr. Chairman, what's the status of the revised noise ordinance that we sent back to the committee?
We need, committee needs to get back together and talk about it again. We talked about a few items on it, and we need to have another committee get a recommendation to come back. Thank you, Mr. Ball, for bringing that up. We'll schedule that with the personnel committee.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question. I'm not sure if it would be under old business, but in reference to Mrs. Schilling's concern, was that one of the roads that was on the six-year plan?
Yes. It has been adopted and added to the six-year plan at this time.
So there's nothing we can really change at this point?
Unless it was to take it off.
We can vote to take it off, but we need to hear from more people on that road.
It's not scheduled, but this year.
It's six years out.
It's six years out.
Next year during the public hearing timeframe, April, May of next year, you could consider it. And if there's, it wanted to come off, that road could be removed off and others add it on.
So it's necessarily, it's not necessarily a downed fee, it's having to be paid?
It is right now.
Well, it is right now.
In six years, provided all the funding comes to fruition, it would be a product to be paid. But.
It's time within the six years?
Every year, a six-year plan is adopted. So every May, June, you usually look at June 30th every year. So there's four, at least four or five more opportunities that you could request a board to have that road removed from the six-year plan.
And we want to do that like in April and May?
When we have the public hearing next year.
Oh, okay. We'll put that on the calendar.
We'll try to, I'll keep your mind, though. I was going to say, is there any way we can send them something to remind them of it?
No, we'll, we'll, anytime we can save the county money, we love.
I just wanted you to know what your options might be.
Actually, this money comes from the state. Anything else on our old business? Here and none, we'll go in. New business, Summit America site plan. This has to do with them adding a generator on site. Mr. Brier, you want to?
Yes, very straightforward. Mr. Angles is here with us and stands in on there. You can see on the thing, there's adding a generator, furnace location. I don't know if y'all got the overhead map in front of you, or if Martha's got it on.
It's a.
I'm on the board system. Yeah, you got it. Okay, there we go. Go bring up and show your board. Thanks, Bobby.
We're just, a small generator to power office equipment and a few lights and dim the power down. So it's a good ways off of elite trinkle drives, hidden behind some shrubs and some trees. So very quiet, too. So I don't think it'd be any issues.
Staff did not see any issues. We just have to request approval of their site plan, and we would recommend approval of the site plan, the head and generator.
So it seems like the technical thing to me.
I entertain a motion to approve their site plan.
I would gladly make that motion.
Have a second. Motion in second. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Where does this come from? Is this a county ordinance?
Yes, sir.
That's part of the point. Why are we making a decision?
The Progress Park covenants require a site plan to be submitted for all construction items, and any exterior items are required to show amendment to the site plan. Mr. Angles has gone through this before. He sent this to us immediately, even though it was a small generator. It would be straightforward, but that's what it's coming from. It's coming from the covenants.
Okay. Point taken. I wasn't here.
Any other questions? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, fellows. It's bureaucracy at its best.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Building and Grounds Committee report.
Martha isn't providing with anything, but we've worked on that. Charlie does. Excuse me, Charlie.
The Building and Grounds Committee met on July 3rd, 2018, and made the following recommendations. Number one is approval of building and designs, change request in amount of $906 for a change in carpet type.
Okay. Can we add this to that, too?
I would request that we add this other one as well that's come up in the last day on this one. If you want to take out the vote number, if you want to vote on that one and then take the other one up instead, because it came out of committee.
Okay, come now committee, doesn't need a second. Any question or discussion?
Does the judge approve of the new carpet?
That's why it's.
Yeah, that's why it's there.
That's the only thing I was worried about. As long as the judge approves, I'm in favor.
That's probably who changed it.
But what's the real story on the lights? I mean, do we just miss it, or do we?
If you want to get this one out.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now let's talk about the lights.
Buildings and Design, who's doing the work out there, looked at it. We have 15 LED lights that are in there. That is what we designed in there. Part of that was with LED lights, they've been brighter, and we put something like in the rooms that have sort of been too bright. So what Mr. Bowers designed was 15. Buildings and Design has looked at it. Their recommendation, they do not feel that is enough lights to cover the area. And these lights are on a dimmable switch also, so if it is too bright, they can be dimmed down. We are providing the lights, we will buy the lights, the cost to provide them. They will install them, and no additional cost. So that is what has come from Building and Design. I apologize, I can't get Buildings and Grounds, but as you know, this is about a six weeks left on this contract, and pretty quick. That's what's coming from this rail.
But the building, the room had gotten any bigger.
No, but the hall lights were coming out, and these are all new lights going back in. And these, this is what was going in is LED lights.
Okay, thank you.
No additional wire?
They're covering all of that in their work.
Is it, are they going to be on different switches?
I believe, I do not know the answer to that.
You just said they're going to be dimmable.
It's dimmable.
They're dimmable, but what I'm, you know, they use video screens and stuff for trials that are up toward the jury box. They may want to dim it, but keep the other lights on for security reasons out in the galleys.
Well, right now, the lights turn on at two different places. I'd say they'll keep at the back and up front.
In the front, yeah.
Okay, I entertain a motion to appropriate, appropriate, $1,025 for additional lights in the circuit court courtroom.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I believe we have enough money in the budget. If you would just request the change, approval of this change order is all we need.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second. Any other further discussion? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item on Building and Grounds?
Next item, item number two is establishing a new maintenance foreman position for the Buildings, Building and Grounds Department. This working foreman position would have oversight of two maintenance positions and would report to the Building and Grounds Supervisor.
Okay.
Could you explain that a little bit more? Like, who's relative to the general?
Linda, you're out of order. Okay? We will ask for questioning or further clarification as we do in every other thing that comes up. Come from committee, doesn't need a second? Any other discussion? Mr. Brier, you want to summarize this?
During the June 29 meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion in here about the Buildings and Grounds Department, about the lack of maintenance areas, some of the needs, some of the concerns that were out there that needed to be addressed. The, went back to the Buildings and Grounds Department, and we discussed that issue. And the, basically what is, currently we have a Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, that Department Ed, Mr. Bowers. That would remain the same. This would be a maintenance foreman position. And then we would have, currently we have two maintenance, in the, two maintenance positions out there. This would be the two maintenance positions. Currently, the person that would move in our maintenance foreman position in this proposal is planning to retire as of office person. We would advertise for a replacement from the maintenance foreman position there. As you know, this gentleman has functioned as pretty much a maintenance foreman for many years in what we've done. And this would add one additional position in the Buildings and Grounds Department to help take care of a lot of the issues that have been brought up, a lot of the things that individuals have indicated have not had an opportunity to be addressed.
I'd also like to ask her, Ms. Myers. Ms. Myers, by adding this as a working foreman or a team leader, we can hire somebody that will work on these mechanical units. And what we should actually save money every year by doing maintenance work in-house that we've been hiring out to different subcontractors to do maintenance work. That's part of the criteria for hiring somebody, that they'll have multiple mechanical skills and actually be able to pave their own way. And just to go a little bit further into what Mr. Hale said, right, as it stands right now, we've got three people on Buildings and Grounds Maintenance, whatever. Give us an overview of how many buildings they're responsible with, county-owned. Just give us a number.
Well, I mean, this is a test, you know. They help out and respond, we're helping out for all the buildings and maintenance, major maintenance and repairs at the Roll Tree Pool and Campground out there. Obviously, all buildings in this complex. All of our fire department buildings fall under our Buildings and Grounds Maintenance. The Rescue Squad building out in the Fort Chisel area falls under that area. Everything at Azure Park, everything at Max Meadows Park out there falls under it. I think I said most of them. Brian can jump in and tell you one.
The library.
The library falls in there as well. Yeah, they do, yeah, they do Progress Park, they do all the, any of our maintenance work or our needs up there that need to be done, I would think that. They, right now, are going to bush hogging and mowing on our additional land that we bought at Exit 77 in the local development. So there's lots of areas. And unfortunately, has been brought up, there's lots of maintenance oversights over the years on the county office courthouse buildings, as Mr. Hale brought up before, that need to be addressed.
And, and that was my point, that it's, I don't like spending money more than anybody, but this is, this is a definite need, not a want.
Aren't they the ones that take care of the road signs? Yes.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any more questions or discussion? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Anything else from Building and Grounds Committee? Here and none. Animal shelter transfer agreement. Mr. Brier?
Request your all's approval of this transfer agreement. Ms. Stacy Pettit has met with Arlen and myself. She has been getting rescued and remembered, incorporated in place. Ms. Pettit has done a tremendous work, working with other agencies. She's also the lady, she and her husband dedicated the air conditioning units and stuff out there. It's like a strong, she has extremely strong love for dogs, and they want to start their own rescue agency to be able to receive transfers from us. And we have an agreement in place. And basically, it just says that they will keep records in compliance with Dakota-Virginia, and we authorize a transfer of dogs to them. They will provide us with a name, certifications from everyone that they have that will be pulling dogs from them. We have similar agreements in place with other agencies. Mr. Dunford and I have reviewed those, and we're going to recommend updating those agreements as well, because some of their leadership has changed, and we want to update those. They'll be coming in upcoming meetings. But we recommend this, and we appreciate the work that they do.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the lease. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
I mean, lease agreement, transfer agreement. Any questions or discussion other than that? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item, Apex Lease.
Mr. Chairman, I have put this on the board just for review and for discussion among the board. This has also gone to the Apex Authority. They are currently meeting tonight, and they may be discussing this also tonight. Mr. Farthing is with us. He has helped draft this lease. We've had some revisions and changes to it. But we need to finalize this lease agreement soon and get the center in the authority's name, so that when they're leasing, they can enter into some agreements and actions on their side. Open for discussion. My recommendation would be follow the discussion, that we take a couple members from the board of supervisors and get a couple members from the Apex Authority to sit down and hash out any differences there, and then come back to the respective boards and try to execute this lease at the next meeting if at all possible.
Okay, you may have any questions?
I've got a few. Under, on page four, under the triple net.
Under, on page four, under the triple net lease, talks about the lease. The tenant shall be responsible for services, utilities. They'll be responsible for electricity, phone, internet, water, sewer, all that. There's no mention of them, the tenant being responsible for providing adequate security. I think that needs to be added. If they have a concert, and they're serving alcohol, and there's 3,000 people in there, they should be responsible for providing security. I don't think it should fall on taxpayers. And what are we going to do about traffic up there until V-Dot decides what they're going to do? And the 41 acres, is that just the buildings?
The 41 acres is basically all the area that's been graded down through there all the way to the bottom of the hill. That is basically the 41 acres.
The second parking lot on the second level.
Yeah, the second parking lot. The stormwater management pond basically sort of splits right around that 41 acres right there. We, we are keeping the 56 acres roughly to the east of that, to the south of that behind it. It has already been subdivided out, and has a plat record on that.
Okay, we have any other questions or anything that would like to be added or to the lease agreement?
I, I personally think 10 years is too long, but I, I think it's... Like I said, I, I hope that it makes money, and I hope I'm wrong, but 10 years is a long time for us to be paying the debt service on it.
Any other? Okay, I'll...
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Stephen, can you explain the real estate taxes part number five on page 30? So they're exempt, the landlord is exempt from paying real estate taxes?
Yes, since we're a government agency and we're the land, we're exempt from paying taxes.
Oh, my gosh, sorry, I'm just...
But they would have to pay. They, it says that tenant shall pay.
They'll pay any taxes on personal property.
Okay.
They buy first property, put out there like a tractor, or whatever other machinery tools they might use in their operations facility. Whoever owns the machinery tools has to file a tax return with the commissioner, and they pay taxes on that personal property.
Any other? Okay, I'll sit. Anybody wants to volunteer to be a member of the two panel? Joe, who else?
I'll do it. Hey, Brian?
Joe?
I don't know parliamentary procedure, but Brian has taken a well-respected person's place, has been against this from the beginning. And just by your obstinance of being against anything for the Apex Center, how can he be productive on that commission?
I think that goes both ways, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hale has been a very large opponent.
He is a representative of the board, Joe, so if he wants to volunteer, there's nothing says he can't volunteer to be on the...
Okay.
On the two-person panel.
I think he would actually make a good addition to it. I mean, if they can't hash it out, then we'd just have to go back and start over again, but I think...
I also agree that he'll make a, yeah, because even though he's not a opponent of it, he still wants it to be successful. So I think we, at this point, we all want it to be successful.
Well, the, the authority is established. That's not what we're discussing.
Right. Now, this is just two people from this board and two people from that.
Work out the lease agreement.
Work out this lease.
And the authority is replaceable by this board periodically. You get to place one, Charlie does, everybody as the turn comes, you get a chance to appoint the members of the authority. So it's, it's not like this group goes on forever without the checks and balances of the board.
I'm aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other things that we need to do with that? Mr. Bear?
No, Mr. Chairman, I...
Do you get those?
We're going to have the comments that we're giving here, and we will schedule this maybe in the second half.
This is a short-lived committee, isn't it?
Basically, once this lease is adopted, this committee's done, so.
Okay. Is anything under, other under new business, Mr. Bear?
I do not believe I have anything. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Collins, do you know anything else?
School board meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to go on that. Okay, we'll be recessing the next meeting until 5:00 PM on Thursday, July 12th. A joint meeting with the Wick County School Board at the School Board Office.
They welcome anybody that wants to show up a little early at around 4:30 or so. I think they're going to have some drinks and stuff there. I had the opportunity to speak with most of you all today, just to make certain we were clear on the agenda. They've got a couple items that they want to cover on the agenda, and then we will have the items that you all discussed with me, which is primarily a top four, finally, all the new issues that have been discussed, and then discussion of ongoing maintenance and everything.
Okay. Okay, you have your informational pack. You can read your book package, and we will be in recess until 5:00 PM Thursday afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could three members of the budget committees just meet briefly with me after you recess here?
Yes. Before, just to let you know, I won't, is it next week, budget committee meeting?
Yes.
I won't be here.
I'll get somebody else sitting for you. Okay, we're in recess.